Happy New Year. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, because it's the first of the year, the board, every first meeting of the year, reelects the Board of Commissioners and their seated positions. So at this time, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I've given you a bad time over this last year, but I like how you run meetings. And so I would like to make a motion to keep the board as is for the year 2020, and hope you will agree to that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
I'm still going to give you a bad time.
It's okay.
Okay.
Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Uh, yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, well, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Next, we're going to do our line of duty casualty report. Commissioner Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I have for concluding of 2019, December was a rough month. So we're up eight on the police officers' line of duty deaths. But the good news is, if you can find-
Stand by one second. Counsel? This is beeping, or bleeping, or blinking. I think it's supposed to be solid.
Good catch.
All right, just to catch the record up, we voted on the new board will remain as it was intact. Myself as chair, Commissioner Boyce as vice chair, Commissioner Gold also is present on the board, and we are currently at our line of duty call.
Thank you again, sir. So the good news, if you can find good news, is that we're down 34 from 2018. I'll have a report next week for line of duty deaths, police officers who are to date for 2020. The fallen heroes, up three. You referenced that last meeting, standing at 35. The good news, I think, is that the attack from the Iranian country last night on our Al-Assad base, 15 square miles, no injuries, no deaths to Americans. So I think that gives the president an opportunity maybe to calm the situation for a little time. And it's a difficult time in our country, and I think we, even at this level of government, need to watch very, very closely. We all have loved ones, friends, relatives in the armed services. Firefighter deaths, the total was 57 for 2018. And also, if I could, Mr. Chair, this would take about two minutes. You kindly referenced the suicide deaths of police officers, and of course, with our war heroes. There's a group called America's Mighty Warriors, and it's quite an article. It'll be on my county portion of the website. I just want to read a couple of paragraphs, quick paragraphs, that reference this, and I think will develop, should develop, community interest. "America's Mighty Warriors has taken the lead as military charity to provide hyperbaric oxygen treatment options for veterans who are struggling with post-traumatic stress or traumatic brain injury. We've been funding this, they have been funding this therapy for the past seven years and have seen the amazing healing that has taken place. The difference is, has made for veterans and their families, and the lives they were literally saved, those lives literally saved from suicide." And here's just one excerpt of the story. When he started the HBOT program, he was on 42 pills a day. 14 years later, he's on two pills a day, and that's for his depression. So it's a tremendous success story. Where I'm going with this, Mr. Chair, the American Warriors has advocated that the HBOT system be standard care for brave warriors who struggle with the effects of combat and have sacrificed their health physically and emotionally defending our freedoms. It is considered off-label nationally. But there are an excellent bipartisan group, particularly at the Senate level, US Senate level, House Bill Resolution 4370, and that's the House side, excuse me, and then the Senate Bill is 2504, needs support from Senators Merkley and Wyden. So I'm going to encourage the public to follow that. This is an article that was sent to me just a few days ago, and it's quite an honor to be able to, thank you for the time, to present that. And again, it's the hyperbaric oxygen therapy treatment. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have on that.
Further comment on that? I'm actually very familiar with hyperbaric chambers with my disease. I've been in hyperbaric chambers.
I did not know.
As well as equine therapy in the business I was in, did hyperbaric, huge hyperbaric chambers. They're very, very health beneficial, but they can be very dangerous as well.
Okay, so maybe that's why it's considered off-label at this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I do.
Go ahead. Commissioner Boyce?
Relating to our workshop for this afternoon, I understand it's impossible for you to be here. I think we need to be at full strength. So I'm going to ask the board to simply table this, the agenda for the workshop this afternoon. And I'm going to make a motion to that, to that extent.
I'm not sure whether that would cause a problem with people involved and so forth.
Yeah, the board did, at the last meeting I was at, the board did direct staff to invite the Citizen Revenue Task Force to that meeting. So we do have members that are planning on coming.
So, Mr. Chair, we could quickly contact the same email list and let them know that this has been tabled, subject to board approval.
Well, I personally think that it is an important issue, and I would like to be at this. I understand that there could be an inconvenience to people, but I would definitely like to have, have all of us present at this workshop. And unfortunately, I am not able to be here. Actually, I didn't think the workshop was going to happen during Ms. Schmelzer's absence. I had actually asked JJ if we could forego it, because I wanted to be at this workshop, and he said that it had already been scheduled. So is it possible that we can contact?
I think we'd want to take a recess probably within the next couple of minutes. I think it's only fair that they have a couple hours' notice. Some of the people, we only contact by email. So we have to trust that they're actually going to see their email on short notice.
Is that something Summer could maybe do or something?
Uh, JJ has the list, so JJ's going to have to do it.
Mr. Chair, I agree that it's important that you be here. And I think that additional time would be very beneficial as well.
How many people are from out of town? On the committee? Just curious.
From out of Gold Beach? Outside of Gold Beach.
Outside of Gold Beach, yeah. Like in Brookings or Port Orford or?
JJ, do you-
That's-
Emily?
We could call her direct. That's not a big issue.
Do you consider Mr. Ostrowski as out of town? It's over Beach, you know.
Just, I would be sure to call him and make sure you get contact. That's all. I just don't want to inconvenience people.
Absolutely. So with that, I would, I would, I would say that we can forego that meeting. I would appreciate that from the board as well.
I'm fine with it as long as everybody's contacted and they're, they're fine with it. So when are we postponing this, until next week?
Well, if we do it when Commissioner Pash is back, it'd have to be after.
It'd be the two weeks after.
Two weeks?
Yeah. So we'll forego this for a couple of weeks in the future?
I think we need a second on that, do we, Mr. Chair?
I'll second that, as long as the people are contacted.
Okay. Further discussion?
Do we need a recess?
Well, let's vote on this first.
Okay.
Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
And I'll have another agenda minute, when the time comes.
Two weeks.
Yes.
Right.
So we want to take a five-minute recess right now, then, so you can contact them, or?
Sure.
Okay, why don't we do that? We're going to recess for five minutes.
Summer heard her name.
All right, we're in recess until 9:15. Just so you, the board knows I'm kind of up against time constraints to leave today.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love, and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you, and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs, and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently, and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded. We're unspoiled. And we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer, and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical, because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors, so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people. It's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life, and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help. So we came up with a mountain bike plan, and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Cooze Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang the last two years. And it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it, and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard. It's going to take a long time. So roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day? Or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun? To marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon, the Verdant Valley of Dairy-
All right, we are back on record. It's 9:23 on January 8th, 2020. JJ's still a little busy, so we're going to hold off on the amendments to the agenda and do public comments at this time. If we could, Mr. Clay. Happy New Year, Gordon.
Thank you. Happy New Year, dear. For the record, my name is Gordon Clay of Brookings, Oregon. This is to give a status report on the formation of the county's new Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council. The council press release went to 34 media outlets, only seven of which were in Curry County. I contacted all of them, and the only ones who responded that they ran the free advertising were Curry Radio and KGBR Radio, who did PSAs, and the Curry County Reporter and Port Orford News, which each ran a complete story on November 20th. I didn't get any response from any others. I then asked each paper to run the advertising a second time, and both the reporter and the news did. KCIW and The Insider were not on the press release list. I got on KCIW for an hour for over two-week period, starting December 23rd, and The Insider ran a whole press release inside their December issue. I encourage you to have both of those on your press release list. At least they're interested in reporting events that are going on in Curry County. I'm asking everyone who is tuned in to mention the Suicide Council to people in Curry County who are directly involved with one of the 14 stakeholder groups, and encourage them to apply. It is helpful that they are active in the stakeholder group so that they know and have direct access to the history of suicide involving the group. They are aware of the problems the group is currently dealing with around suicide, and will have access to the people within the group who would consider implementing corrective strategies the council may come up with. We're looking for a volunteer in each of these categories: law enforcement officer, first responder, EMT, or fire, medical doctor, nurse, hospital board member, or community care organization member, social therapist, social worker, therapist, counselor, or peer support, trained in suicidality, substance abuse and recovery person, youth educator, elder services, juvenile programming, veterans programming or services, a city manager or administrator, a tribal community member, a face-based community, a youth ambassador, media, and three laypeople who are not involved in any of the stakeholder groups. Go to the county website, print off the application, check the other box, and write Suicide Council, and then write which position or positions you are qualified for. That's not being done on the current applications. Applications must be received by the Board of Commissioners by the close of business on January 16th, 2020. That's only eight days from today. If the county is to get a handle on corrective actions in our suicide crisis, we need to fill all 17 positions with overqualified people. We can't afford to lose another neighbor, friend, colleague, or family member to suicide. So please volunteer. And I would ask on Position 9G today that we support Commissioner Boyce to be the liaison to the Suicide Council. And I hope that is accepted in G9 today, on today's agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Barnes, if you would, I know you're not scheduled until 9D, and we are up against some time constraints this morning. Could we get you to make comments on this early?
Moving on.
I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm David Barnes. I wanted to speak about, there's an item on the agenda about refugee resettlement. And I read all the information that goes along with it, and I did some research on it. And this is asking for, the Secretary of State is asking for letters of consent that we would be willing to accept refugee resettlement in our county. And I just wanted to point out that Curry County is highly, highly unsuitable and a poor choice for the success of refugee settlement, resettlement. And some of the things I'd like to point out to you of why is, you know, we're currently under a state of housing emergency. We don't have housing for the people who live here already. We have 10% of our people live in substandard housing. 30% of our children go to bed, food, and secure every night. Most of them are on free lunch and reduced lunch programs. Our elementary school down in South County is the most crowded elementary school in the state. There's no unskilled labor market here. There's no housing. We have high opioid usage. I mean, the list goes on and on and on. When you consider this, I would certainly hope that you do not consent to becoming a refugee community.
Commissioner Boyce?
Quickly, Mr. Chair, could you provide us a copy of that? Those stats are scary, and I'd just like to know where you got that information, and not surprised, but would be very helpful if you could provide-
I've got that information sitting right in that chair over the last year.
Okay.
So it's just things that have been said in the front of this room in the last year, so.
So it's a compilation of your work- So it's a compilation of your work and research and just different studies pulled together, et cetera?
Yes, there was a study about food insecurity two months ago that we listened to. We've heard, we've heard talk by the code enforcement officer about how many violations there are in the county, you know, from other people I've spoken to. Other things are easily looked up, you know? So, you know, there's just all those things, you know? I sat here when you passed the state of emergency for housing, so.
I think that's all.
You know, I just, I just want to point out before you consider this, that I just, I don't think there would be successful assimilation should we try something like this. You know, we need to address the problems for the people who live here already before we start talking about bringing in more people.
Thank you, sir. All right, getting back to amendments to the agenda. Commissioner Boyce, you said you had another?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I wanted to pull from the consent agenda, Item 7A. Certainly nothing against the applicant. This Citizens Revenue Task Force is really, I think, Mr. Chair outdated, so I'm just a little puzzled on why we are going to continue this, and here's why briefly. The two primary board members on that task force are David Haney and Ron Crook. Both are very active, as you know, in the Friends of the Fair movement. And now that we have the countywide lodging tax approved by the voters, that's one, that was one source of revenue that the county could put to good use, and I think we have number two, through the advisory program on the consumption tax, that went down to voter disinterest rather substantially. I think it's fair to say that none of the three of us are going to promote raising property taxes, so what else is there? So as far as the Citizens Revenue Task Force, what are we going to gain by keeping this committee going? I remember following Commissioner Huxley some time ago and just watching him give rationale, and sometimes the committees just don't justify the time. So I think this would be an unnecessary exercise to put somebody on this committee, and we've had a struggle to keep that program going anyway. That's all I have. So I'm gonna make a motion that we disband the Citizens Revenue Task Force, and maybe we need to replace it with something else. A watchdog group on how we spend, whatever might be appropriate there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments?
I'm gonna have to disagree with that simply because I think the consumption tax was not successful because it had not been researched thoroughly. It just kind of came on the ballot.
Were we not miked?
Well, I guess not. Everybody's pretty good, all right? So I don't think that the consumption tax was researched thoroughly. I think the committee was working on that. I think there were some other problems with the committee. I don't want to get into that at this point, but I think it could be very successful. So I'm gonna have to disagree with that.
If I may, Mr. Chair, and just a quick response.
Mr. Boyce?
Thank you again. The committee did not have an interest in the consumption tax. I personally pushed that very hard. I also, I'm shocked that you believe Commissioner, with all due respect, Gold, that there was not ample research in that. I pulled in three previous commissioners who spent considerable time on that, in addition to Gary Milliman and some other people. I have in my documents right here probably 10 different representations of what that could have been for this county, including a million dollars coming over the border from Dillorn County at one and a half percent. And I just could never get any, any additional help or interest. So, you know, what else do you think there might be that we could look at, or this Revenue Task Force could actually look at, outside of the three I mentioned?
Well, one of the things, one of the things they were looking at as far as a consumption tax was just doing things on non-essential items, not just a sales tax across the board. And that kind of went down. It wasn't, in my opinion, wasn't researched carefully enough.
Well, the voters spoke on that, Mr. Chair, so I think it's a waste of time to continue this board, in my view.
Well, I think my point on it is, I'm sorry, Counsel, go ahead.
So the question I have is, the matter we're discussing seems different a little bit from what's on the agenda. I know it's tangential or related. If I'm looking at this, the action for the board to consider is whether to appoint members to a existing task force. It's not whether to, it's not a new, if, you know, we would need to consider that. So there may be some question about whether the item you're discussing is properly noticed. Again, I know it's tangential to appointing. For the appointment, I can understand Commissioner Boyce saying, because I don't believe this committee should exist anymore, I'm not going to appoint anyone. But again, I think we're getting a little off the agenda topic, so if we could just kind of go back to this, I think, I think we're talking about two different things.
What I'd like to say is, as far as this is, I like ideas. I like, I like to have input into things. And the Revenue Task Force, they bring, they bring, you know, basically ideas to this board on how they, how they see different points to, for financial resources for the county. It's not, they don't make a final decision on anything. They just bring, excuse me, they just bring this board ideas and, and do the research on that, and do the, you know, do the planning stages for that. I don't feel any, any harm in that it's a volunteer group. I actually, I'd like to see it livestreamed like we do the board meetings, so that the public could see exactly the work that volunteers in this county do and, and how they arrive at some of the ideas and answers that they have. So, you know, as far as having this committee, I think it's a useful committee, or task force, not a committee, it's a task force. But I think it's very useful in the county, and I think, I think we should at least let it go on for a while and see, and see what they come up with.
Based on your support and that clarification, Mr. Chair, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. Do we have anything further on amendments, Ms. Schmelzer?
I do. At the last meeting, there was an item that was supposed to be discussed under executive session, and it was missed, so I just want to amend the agenda so it can be discussed. It would be, I'm adding the agenda to include ORS 192.660, parent 2, parent, small a, parent to the employment of an officer, employee, staff, or agent.
192660, parent what?
Uh, 2.
2A.
2A, okay. All right. Anything further?
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, next we're moving on to 6A. Coast Community Health Center Linda Maxson.
I don't think she's here.
Again, she is not here. This is her second time. She's missed.
Yes, I did remind, so I had, so I had to make sure I was on there. So I did reschedule her and confirm that, and then late last night, I did send her an email reminding her. I realized that was a late reminder. Normally, we don't send reminders, but I am surprised she's not here. Maybe she's held up, or there was a delay, or perhaps she had a client.
My concern is this is the second time we've scheduled her in front of the board, and she hasn't responded to either one. And I do know her, I met her in Port Orford, and she actually asked to present here, so I'm surprised she's not here. Commissioner Boyce?
She was at the Senator Merkley Town Hall. She was not feeling well, and also, she's not very good about returning her emails. But I'm very interested to not shut the door here, Mr. Chair, just because it's so important to our North County, as you know, and they've got a lot of good things going. And so I am puzzled, but hopefully we can, again, I'll repeat, keep the doors open. Thank you.
Ms. Schmelzer, if you would, please reach out to her. Next, we have number seven, the Consent Agenda. Appoint one member to the Citizens Revenue Task Force, and appoint one member to the Budget Committee, North County Position.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as written.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll, please. No, it wasn't pulled. He withdrew the motion.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Pat, Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes, sir.
Chair Pash?
Yes, sir.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, next we're moving on to discussion action items. A, Adams, Appeal Gravel Extraction, Ms. Crockett.
Good morning. Good morning, I'm Becky Crockett, Curry County Planning Director. The item before you has been discussed at length at your last meeting on November 20th, 2019. So I'm just going to pretty much summarize what has happened since that time, and then with assistance from County Council, talk about possible decisions that the commissioners can choose to make. First, I want to remind you that this was a de novo land use process. That is, the board is deciding on issues without reference to the conclusion of the Planning Commission, but with the record of evidence and the criteria that the board must address and meet for this application are primarily those in the Curry County Zoning Ordinance, Section 7.040. Now, as I mentioned, you may recall that you took action on this on November 20th. That action that you took was to close the hearing and leave the record open for 14 days to allow the public comment on information that was provided by the applicant at that hearing. Today, the hearing is closed, which unless the board reopens the hearing, does not allow for testimony by either the applicant or the public. We did receive additional comments during the 14 days that you left the record open, both in support of the application and a lot not in support. Now, I want to say in accordance with ORS 197.763, the applicant then was provided the comments received after that 14 days. I personally gave the applicant the comments. And he then was allowed seven days to submit final written arguments in support of his Pursuant to ORS 197.763, the applicant's final submittal shall be considered a part of the record, but shall not include any new evidence. However, the applicant did submit new evidence into the record. Actually, I want to clarify, the applicant submitted new information. It's your decision whether or not that should be added to the record. Specifically, he included a map with GPS coordinates detailing additional locations and sizes of gravel areas proposed for extraction. Now, if the board decides to receive that new evidence into the record, then the record must remain open another seven days to allow the public the opportunity to comment on that new information. Then, again, the applicant is allowed another seven days to submit final arguments in support of his application again. Following that process, that is, in ORS 197.763 is crucial to a land use proceeding. However, it's also just as important for the board to make a decision that satisfies the criteria in the Curry County Zoning Ordinance. That's the criteria that we laid out in Section 7040, Number 10. Specifically, and I'm going to kind of summarize this, the code states the applicant's plans and specifications must contain sufficient information to address the standards. Thus far, staff has not seen scientific data, studies, or technical data in the record to support a changing proposal that's been made by the applicant. The standards that we must meet include the need for an evaluation of potential impacts on noise, dust, water quality, water flow, fish habitat, land stability, vegetation, wildlife habitat, and land and soil erosion, essentially the environmental impacts of the operation. Mr. Adams' proposals don't tell us much detail regarding the operation. There's no information on scalping depth, equipment to be used, number of trucks involved, the stockpiling, water diversion, burming, timing in regards to fish migration, flow impacts, fish stranding from holes dug in the gravel bar, vegetation removal, access or road construction. Further, there has been some but little coordination with the numerous federal and state agencies and an effort to comply with their regulatory requirements, which could help satisfy some of the criteria in the Curry County Zoning Ordinance. Now, there are some emails that were submitted into the record from a few agencies, and there are letters from environmental groups, but mostly those that are trying to apply support are suggesting and are receptive to working outside this process with the applicant to develop a better plan and a method to address the problems with sedimentation and gravel in the Pistol River. County Planning has also stated our support to participate with the applicant in these efforts. At this point, I would like to turn to the decisions that are on the table for the board that's on page three of the staff report. Essentially, Option 1 allows the board to open the record and accept the new information submitted by the applicant. If the, if the commissioners decide to open the record and accept that information, then you would have to allow another seven days for the public to respond to that information, and then allow the applicant an additional seven days to comment and add evidence into the record, hopefully no new information. Secondly, you have the option to proceed to make a decision on the application. You have the option to reverse the Planning Commission's decision and approve the request. That one becomes a little problematic for staff in that we would want to make sure that there are adequate conditions on the application as was proposed through the Planning Commission process. Second option is to affirm the Planning Commission's decision to deny the application. And coupled with those two actions would be a decision to not open the record for acceptance of the applicant's new information that was submitted. So with that, I'm gonna be here for questions with the assistance of legal counsel.
Counsel Huddle?
Thank you. Director Crockett, there was, again, we had the public hearing, we closed the public hearing, we left the record open for additional submittals, and we did receive additional submittals from the applicant and then from other parties, party's opponent, maybe even supporters, I don't know. I'm looking at the agenda packet. I think it's three different tabs. One of them has 419 pages in it or so. Included in the packet that was given to our board, did that include all the submittals from both the applicant and the party's opponent and participants in the matter? Do you know?
Yeah, what, what I know is that the Planning Department submitted all the information that came in from, from the public, as well as from the applicant, by December 14th of 2019. That was in the commissioner's office at that time. We worked with the commissioner's office to try to put all of the record online. I understand that there were some computer glitches, some difficulty in all that information actually being online, but all of the information, the record, the entire record, was available in the commissioner's office by December 14th. The completed record of hearing is also available in the Planning Department and was available as of December 14th.
But was it also included in the packet, the same documents you're talking about? Are those in these pages in the, in the board's materials for today's meeting that has also been published?
As I understand that they are, yes.
Okay, thank you. So the board, because as you just, as you just heard, there was a glitch or something that prevented the, so these materials are both given to the board in a packet, but they're also posted separately at links on different web pages around the county. Those links on the web pages are for informational purposes to the general public, but they're, they're not necessarily the board's packet. But what I'm understanding is, notwithstanding whether there was a glitch in putting the information out to the general public by these separate links, the information submitted by the opponents was included for the board to consider on a decision today?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So that, that was just a question that I had after talking to some of the people involved in the process. So my, my understanding then is that the board has in front of it all of the information from the applicant and from the participant parties, and then the question for the board would be to whether to, if the board does accept the new facts, new evidence, the, after the, after the record is closed to everyone, the applicant gets seven days, they can submit new information, but it has to be argument, not evidence, and as Director Crockett pointed out, there's evidence. If the board opens up the record again to allow that new evidence, then it will have to give all the other parties at least seven days to respond to the new evidence. If, and then the board has options of rejecting that additional evidence from the applicant and making a decision just on what was in the, in the packet there before the, before the final submittal.
So basically, if we reopen this, they get, we're gonna roll for another 14 days and then close it again. and then close it again, and then it'll come back?
Yes. And that is one option before the board.
Is that option, if I may, I'm sorry. Is that option one?
That's option two.
That's option one.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's option one.
Okay, thank you.
My question for you is, and I know you're not a river expert and you're not a rock expert, and I understand that there's...
She was born in Pistol River.
I didn't say she wasn't born and understands the river, but she's not, I don't believe she's an expert on scalping and all that stuff. I know a lot of those things you said haven't been met, how deep the scalping would be, exactly how many trucks and those kind of things for the footprint that it would make. My question is, facing what we're facing in the Rogue this year, and we've had Congressman DeFazio here and some others from the state here, with the amount of rock coming down the river, the inordinate amount of rock coming into the mouth of the river, or coming down the river and clogging the mouth, what kind of damage does do you foresee in that area if it was scalped? I mean, I know down by my ranch last year...
If I could, I think this might be getting into the realm of even more new evidence if you're asking for, you know, an opinion on factual consequences of an action. So, I...
So, I guess we need to move forward with A, B, or C. Commissioner Gold?
If we were to go with the planning commission's decision, would Mr. Adams be able to resubmit an application giving more specific evidence in the future?
Absolutely. The Curry County zoning ordinance allows an applicant to reapply a year after his submittal was not acceptable.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'm going to move that we affirm the planning commission's decision.
Do I have a second? The planning commission's decision is to...
Deny the application.
Discussion, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Boyce?
I think to get more evidence and open the whole thing up, both sides, to give the applicant and the public more time, this is no small task we're headed into one way or the other. So, I'm really asking the board to consider option one, as I understand it, as it has been explained.
My only problem with continuing this even farther is, at our last meeting, I asked, sorry, I got a tickle in my throat, I asked Mr. Adams if he would come back with a more definitive plan. The GPS markings, I understand, he came up with, but you know exactly what you said is how much, you know, what exactly he was going to do and where. And my concern is that he did not do that. And I'm glad to hear that he can reapply. My problem is we've got a lot of staff time in this already, and to keep kicking it down the road, I'm just sad that he didn't come in with more information, what he had, and a lot of time to be able to do that. Go ahead.
The only thing I would add to that is that any citizen who would take on this kind of a task has a lot of work out in front of them and a lot of time, just a lot of hurdles. And so, I hate seeing discouraged. It may not fly, and I understand, but I think the other important thing we could add to that, Mr. Chair, is that, also as I understood correctly, that there are some citizens out there that want to help him, albeit they might be late. They want to help him get some of this information and overcome these barriers. So, that's why I'm pushing, and I'd be happy to make a motion, subject to your approval, Mr. Chair, again for option one.
Commissioner Gold?
Those folks could help him by letting him reapply again.
Absolutely. And it's not just citizens. These are the environmental groups, the watershed council. There has been numerous entities that have come forward and expressed support to help with this project. The bottom line is, yeah, there's too much sediment and gravel in the lower Pistol River, no question about it. And there seems to be consensus by everybody that something needs to be done. Whether or not this is the right avenue for it to be done seems to be a big question. And there is a lot of interest in a more collaborative effort between all of the interests that are involved in the Pistol River to come forward with a proposal that people feel more comfortable with.
Commissioner Gold?
I don't think 14 days is going to be able to significantly change a plan, to be honest with you, since all of those groups are involved.
I will say this also, you know, in working on the Rogue River this year, on the amount of sediment in the Rogue and also down in the Chetco, we looked at that somewhat, and I fully agree. There's too much sediment and rock in the river. And we had some government agencies come and look at it, and they all said, we need to remove the rock from this river. We were surprised here in the mouth of the Rogue that the Corps came up, what I considered short, to even properly opening the mouth of the river. But we had discussion, or the port, I mean, the mouth of the port. We had discussions all the way up to the landing up here, the landing restaurant. That whole area is in low tide. You could almost walk across it and wouldn't get your knees wet. So, in the middle of summer, anyway. You know, we do have to come up with ways to do this. I know the port of Gold Beach has a dredge that they use occasionally in their area. So, there is access to be able to do this, but I think we need proper planning, the proper agencies to give their stamp on it. And I think there are certain permits that have to be filed if you get your wheels wet and your machinery with the state agencies and federal agencies in that river. So, I would say that I would hope that Mr. Adams, as I recommended to him at the last meeting, would consider withdrawing his application and redoing it properly with all the i's crossed and t's dotted. And I say that's what I said to him at the last meeting. I'm not saying he should consider that now because that's not on the table.
I did have a question, if I could.
Yes, sir.
I've seen, there was a question by, I think, Commissioner Gold. If the board denies the application, can the applicant resubmit an additional application in the future? I think that answer is yes, but I think there's a time within...
One year, one year.
Right.
Ask an answer.
Thank you.
One year.
If they withdraw, if they withdraw the application, then it's not a denial, and I don't think there's the one-year time limit.
That's correct.
And that's why I asked him to withdraw.
Good.
And he did not withdraw, and I was actually expecting him to, because on that particular day, there were several members of the audience that offered him a helping hand right there. And I'm actually, like I say, I was surprised to see that this wasn't more thorough when this came back in front of us. Commissioner Boyce?
He's not going to ask him, at all intents and purposes, cause him to start completely over, if he doesn't?
No, I think it's...
Maybe I misunderstood.
When you refile, if he withdraws, then, or refile, I believe, he's just got to get things more in order than they are to meet the requirements for the planning commission.
That's correct, that's correct.
That helps.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, being that he did not, he did not withdraw the application, Commissioner Gold has a motion to... Clarify your motion, Commissioner?
To accept the planning commission's decision.
Do I have a second on that? I will second that. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
No.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried two to one.
And I hope Mr. Adams does resubmit with the proper things that he needs to do this. I am all for removing gravel from the river to reopen it for fish. Next, we are going to move on to professional services contract. Ms. Schmelzer?
Yes, as you know, Brandt Media has been doing our video photography, filming our meetings and posting it to, I believe, the website and social media. And their contract terminated on December 31st. So, I think it's advisable that we continue to film the meetings and broadcast the meetings. We have a couple of options to do so. One is, we have staff that has that capability, however, that's not what she was hired for. She was hired to administer the TLT and the business license ordinance and do some economic development assistance work in the form of tourism and help out if we needed some filming work. Eric Feliciano, who was working for Brandt Media, is available to continue to film our meetings if we'd like that option. So, we have a couple of things to discuss here. Eric is willing to do it. We could contract with him, or we could put out an RFP, or we could advertise for a job. Eric is willing to do the work, though. I think he's done an excellent job for us. And he is willing to do the work at $30 an hour for the meetings that are here in Gold Beach and $40 an hour for the off-site meetings. Just for reference, we were paying Brandt Media $70 an hour for the meetings. So, Eric is about half cost for doing that. Just some other things I want to bring to the board's attention, that when you have an off-site meeting, some of them result in seven to eight-hour days for the film crew. Eric believes he can get that down to about five hours for a remote meeting, because, you know, you have to pick up the equipment, you have to haul it down there, you have to set it up, you have to take it down, et cetera. But overall, we're looking at saving about half on the contract if we would go with Eric. So, if the board is acceptable with that, I'll bring back an order and an official contract for you to approve. Eric is here today. He is filming, and I told him that the board did approve it, we would, my recommendation would be that we backtrack or backdate the start date to today's date. You need a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we approve the professional services contract with Eric.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further comment?
I will just bring an order back at the next meeting then to make that official so we can get that actually recorded with the clerk's office.
Perfect. Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
C, to approve public safety answering point, PSAP 911 configuration, project report, and staff recommendations. Ms. Schmelzer?
Yes, the previous board had, if I remember, if I understand this correctly, they had proposed that the county work with the city of Brookings to contract with the Portland State University to do a project to determine, you know, should the 911 services be combined, Brookings and the sheriff's office? And to look at that whole operation and come back with recommendations. The group met in, I think it was November. It was city of Brookings staff and then Curry County, the sheriff's staff, and I, we met and decided that there were so many errors in the document that we really should not recommend it be adopted. We did, I did forward the report to you so you could see the findings in the report. The findings did say, you know, we should be looking at a Gold Beach facility or more centrally located facility. But the data that that was based on had errors in it. So, we questioned whether or not it was reliable. And so, I did let Portland State University know that I was going to be recommending the board not accept the report.
Okay.
So, question, do we still have to pay for it if there's a lot of errors in it?
Yes, we paid 18,000, about $18,000 for our share of the report.
Mr. Boyce?
I thought we, and maybe you've already done this, I remember talking to you, that we were going to challenge them to start over, basically, or at least fix it?
Well, to fix it means starting over, and first of all, I don't know if they would do that.
Well, they would be ethically obligated, I would think.
I suppose we could ask. I have to be honest with you, I do not think the city of Brookings or the sheriff's department would be interested in doing that at this time.
Well, the sheriff's here, but likely because it may produce the same, because Portland State's reputation has been very good, but in this case, doesn't sound like they followed through properly at all.
Well, I'll tell you what I'd like to do is...
Not happy about wasted money, huh?
Yeah. Is, as again, however the vote goes, but I'd like to be the person to contact the university. I'll gladly contact them and ask them for a refund because of the errors.
Did we already pay this?
Yes, oh, I'm sure.
Because again, I think if they haven't performed, we can...
Absolutely.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, you have my support on that.
I will be the one to do that. So, we're going to deny renewal of the contract, and then I will contact the university for a refund.
So, we don't have to renew the contracts. We don't have to worry about that part. What we have to do is just formally not accept the report.
Okay.
And then follow up, you know, let them know that you were going to follow up and talk to them about the fee.
So, do you have specific errors in there that he can discuss?
Um, yes.
Okay, because I think it's important that everything's factual?
I'll see if the sheriff will endorse those errors as well.
Okay.
Wasn't prepared to go ahead and talk about this, but, you know, I'll give you my information on it. When we decided to, you know, contract with the city and Portland State University, we were under the impression that we would get a really, a good recommendation on how to consolidate. But what we understand was, the project was turned over to a graduate for his master's thesis or things like that, that had no experience in PSAPs or anything like that. And his supervisor and everything are gone. They don't even work there anymore. We did pay, I think, our half of 17,500. Brookings never paid, and because they were waiting on the final. Well, the final, well, actually, the final draft that came out was completely full of errors, just saying that we didn't need to, if we did consolidate, we didn't need more dispatched based on the number of calls. And there was like, what was it, 800,000 calls that they...
I can't remember the number, but they missed some...
That they, and we explained that to them, and, but we're not confident in their work on this at all. And unfortunately, the county, we were out, cost $18,000 on that.
The city paid nothing simply because they said our $18,000 was the first half, and they were going to pay when it's completed? Is that how it worked?
I'm not sure, you know, it wasn't our, my, to deal with Brookings on how they paid their bill. All I know is they did not pay, and they were waiting for the final product before they paid. But I think we got a bill, and they wanted, you know, halfway in between, they said, hey, you need to pay this and blah, blah, and so the county did. But we were still on the impression that we were going to get a good document that shows how to consolidate and the reasons why. With that, they did say that, yeah, that there needs to be consolidation, that more than likely, it needs to be out on its own, but for now, it would have to be with the sheriff's office, which they had some issues with that, you know, the seismic of the building and all that kind of stuff. And bottom line is, I think if you really wanted to know a little bit more about the reasons why Brookings didn't pay to contact Lieutenant Donnie Dodson, he is, he worked on this more than anybody, and he knows all the numbers. And when we had our meeting back, I think in November, we all decided that this wasn't something we wanted to pursue because it was so flawed that we couldn't deal with it.
Well, and not only that, it sounds to me like they just kind of pawned it off on a graduate student to do it rather than the professionals.
Well, that's my impression.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to encourage you to just take the approach you said a bit ago, but please consider adding, I'm going to disagree with the sheriff just a little bit because we'll lose valuable time here in trying to pull off this consolidation. Give them a chance to make it right rather than us trying to get our 18,000 back, which will probably take five years, and maybe some good will come out of it. I might be, that might be a huge reach, but my hope is that your call will generate some discontent, and understandably so, and move this thing forward.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I would suggest they contact Lieutenant Donnie Dodson.
That's a very good idea.
I will first, Joe.
Good. Very good.
I move that we do not accept the report and that Commissioner Pash is authorized to contact Portland State.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, it's a few minutes, it's 10 minutes after 10:00. I need to take a five-minute break real quick. We'll be back at 10:15.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love, and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern, be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you, and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs, and it crippled us. Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently, and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower forty-eight states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love. We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer, and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the rural tourism studio came here, I was skeptical, because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally, and I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing. The rural tourism studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food, and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships. In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away, and so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors, so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op. We created a farm trail from Bannon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than five hundred people, it's very small, so we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life, and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know if anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan, and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area, so we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the rural tourism studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small, and now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here. My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the tourism studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bannon down to Brookings, and...
All right, we are back in. It is ten seventeen on January eighth, two thousand twenty, moving on to nine D. County, County Council John Huddle. Surprised you, didn't I? This is the refugee resettlement.
Which is kind of funny. All I did was pass this along from AOC to the BAC office, so I really don't have anything to add. I mean, the federal government, I think we have the, what is it, an executive order in there, and it seems to be something that I haven't seen before, where the feds are actually looking for feedback from local communities, not just states, but also cities and counties, as to whether...
Rent a pressure.
... they want to accept refugees. So the way I interpret this, if we do not affirmatively say we want them, then they will, they have a policy that they will not locate refugees here. But really, I don't have anything else to add about this.
Okay.
It's really a policy choice for the board.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we do not contact the federal government without accepting refugees.
Do I have a second?
Discussion, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I don't understand the motion. Are we going to write a letter, or just...
No, we don't do anything.
We're not.
Nothing.
If you do nothing...
That's what council just said. If you want them, then you write a letter saying we want them.
Mr. Barnes's recommendation was to write a letter that, with the rationale, I think he speaks for a lot of Curry citizens, but maybe that's not necessary in this, in amplifying what Council Huddle said there. This is, they're, they're wanting state and local involvement in this, in input, so you're, the motion is to do nothing, not to respond.
Yes.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next, we're going to have nine E. Approve order amending personal rules, Article twenty regarding pregnancy accommodation. Ms. Swift.
So Ms. Swift contacted me by email and says that she's not live streaming, and to give her an email when it's time for her to come, so I just sent her an email, so hopefully she'll be here very quickly.
I hear the door closing.
I actually worked with her on this item. I can kind of summarize, but there was a new law that says that we have to basically give time for pregnancy accommodation. And the interesting part about it is, most employee benefit laws, and it's effective January first, so if the board adopts this today, which is staff recommendation, and we have to give accommodations, as well, I said, time, but also we have to reasonably accommodate. It applies to applicants, so people who are not hired as well as employees, and most laws require employees to work a certain amount of time before they get a benefit. This applies immediately, and again, it applies to applicants. Julie, I just kind of gave a brief summary. You and I worked on this a little bit, but I, I summarized that it applies to applicants and employees. We have to do reasonable accommodations, and it is effective January first, and that there's no delay time for it to apply as an employee benefit. So I don't know if you have anything to summarize, to add to that.
That's all correct. That's what the new law says.
So this is a law that's already taken effect?
Yeah, it became effective January first.
And if someone were to be hired tomorrow that were unknowingly three months pregnant, we would, we would, they would automatically qualify for this?
Or, or even knowingly.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
A second? I'll second it. Further discussion?
State law, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
F is to approve AOC Association of Oregon County's Legislative Committee appointment. Ms. Schmelzer?
The Association of Oregon County's got ahold of me and indicated that they have an opening. They asked us if we would have, make an appointment to that committee, so you do have the information in front of you, and we're looking for you to appoint someone. In my opinion, the logical choice would be Commissioner Boyce, since he's been very involved with that committee. Of course, that is up to the board.
We have public comment, David Barnes. We can do both at this moment, please.
Yeah, David Barnes again. I just want to speak to you. I, you know, we used to, this board used to do liaison reports every so often, and, and the members would come in and they would talk about what's happening in their liaison roles around the county, and that's something that seems to have gone away. And we don't get that anymore, and, you know, we had just last, just since the fall, we've had a case where there's a commissioner didn't even know that the Southern Oregon Workforce Investment Board was meeting, because the liaison hadn't said anything about it. And we had an issue just recently where our Public Health Administration has all of a sudden fallen apart, and, you know, a, a board member on that didn't say anything about it. And I'd just like to point out that a liaison is an individual who is responsible for relaying all communication between groups, and that's something that we're not having here. You know, liaison is more than just going out and meeting people and attending meetings, it's coming back and reporting on what you learn at those meetings. And, you know, before we take this real lightly and just start appointing people, you know, Commissioner Pash, you're on the National Association of County Officials now. You'll be in office for three more years. I would think it would be a natural progression and a synergy for you to also serve as our representative on the Oregon, on the AOC and its incumbent bodies. You know, it's very likely that we'll have, you know, new commissioners next year, except for you. And, you know, it seems to me that, you know, there's a natural synergy between what comes out of Washington and what happens in the state, and, you know, we, we're just, we're wanting for information here, and we're, you know, we're not getting it, and I'd like you to really reconsider all these assignments rather than just rubber-stamping them today. Thank you.
Thank you. I will, I will be the first to admit that I've been remiss myself in reporting on some of the liaison duties that I have. I don't know if maybe there's a chance that we could do a, I don't know, a workshop a month or something like that to just give, or just give some commissioner comments. I don't know how to set that up, but I, I think we're all a little bit remiss in, in doing, reporting of the liaisons. As far as AOC goes, I think Commissioner's, Commissioner Boyce's involvement in AOC has been fruitful, and I, I agree that I think he should remain the liaison for AOC. NACO is a different animal, it's, it's a national association. I don't agree personally with all of the, the things that AOC is doing right now, but I don't, you know, I don't, I don't fault them for that, that's what they're doing, and I appreciate their hard work. I have reached out to AOC and asked them to get involved in their veterans committee, because I am the, one of the vice chairs with NACO, and perhaps we could work hand-in-hand in those departments. But I think taking on too many things, spreading yourself too thin, is, is not a, not a good thing to do as well, so I appreciate your work with AOC, and again, I would, I would just ask that we all find a way to do better reporting, as Mr. Barnes has said, on, on our liaisons and what's happening with them. Those are my comments. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. One of the issues we've had is sometimes a disinterest in commissioner comments, and we're not just talking to our fellow commissioners, and I've made this point in the past, it does drag the meetings out a little bit, but we are very responsible to report every meeting, how it affects the county. You know, I'm looking at the short session coming up in February, and I'm relieved, because this with AOC is a tremendous responsibility. It is a six-hour drive each way, it is sleeping in a different bed, if you don't go up and back the same day, but to not go and represent Curry County has consequences, as you know. So I would gladly give this up, and I think you would be very, I mean, it's a tremendous commitment, but it gets back to our job descriptions on what we agreed to this time last year, on the, the amount of hours that it requires over and above normal business hours, reporting back to the, to the commission board, reporting back to the citizens. Being in the legislative process, I've testified in different hearings for some of our salmon and trout enhancement work, all the above. I mean, you have to be there, and I've had to take on this position because the first two years, nobody else was interested or willing. I had no choice. Spread myself too thin, I think you recognize that, I, I do not disagree, I always seem to have the energy, but if you wanted to, it, this requires a Monday minimum every month. Sometimes you can get away with calling in, their system is pretty good, but I think you would be very effective on this, and thank goodness, at least right now, I think we have the travel budget to accommodate it, and I will gratefully pass on the baton. If not, I will continue to do this because the county's got to be represented, and if the public wants better and more informed, detailed reports, I'll be glad to do that, and I think I'm obligated on that. Thank you.
All right, well, at this point, I would, I would prefer that, because you have, have such a relationship with them, excuse me, that you continue with it for, for a period of time, and then down the road, perhaps, we can make a change on it, if we both agree to do that, but...
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I'm sorry I interrupted you. I'm just going to hold out, hope, and I know that if I challenge, not challenge you, but lobby you to attend some of the short session committee meetings that directly affect Curry County on, we just saw one bill there with a pregnancy deal, and so we have to be there, and I can, I can enlighten you, or not enlighten you, but offer those times, I think it would be a very beneficial county to have you attend, and go to that time at expense. Thank you.
I appreciate it. I've actually already reached out to Representative Smith's office.
Good.
I know I can't be on the floor, but I have asked if I could come up for, for a couple of meetings and just, you know, sit in on some of that.
We have the aggregate, the fish, the sod, I mean, there is quite a list. We have to be there. Thank you again.
All right, so do I have a motion to accept F, nine F, as Commissioner Boyce is the, is the representative?
I so move.
A second? I'll second. Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
abstain.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried two to zero.
And again, should we, you know, down the road, we may, we may look at, you know, changing that up, so. All right, moving on to G, approve assigned liaison roles to the board. Ms. Schmelzer?
Please, pass that out. So every year, the board has to choose their liaison assignments, and also the liaison assignments to certain boards. And in December, the board discussed this matter and said, tentatively, they wanted to keep things the way they were. So what I did was, I just prepared a cleaned-up version, so to speak, and have it on... So what I did was I just prepared a cleaned-up version, so to speak, and have it in front of you. And what this does is it leaves all of the department liaison assignments the way they were. I do have to tell you, the Parks Department has requested a change in liaison assignments. They have requested that Commissioner Gold be the liaison, just due to the location of her residence based where they're proposing new parks. So I think that's something you'll want to discuss. And then when you look down at the committees and boards, what I did was, in the past, sometimes commissioners, the liaison lists has kind of showed all the groups or committees somebody serves on. And what I did was, before you, I toned it down to those that really require board appointments. So this, this is a list of committees, departments, boards where we assign liaisons to. It's not want, it's not meant to be a list of all the committees that somebody might serve on. So this list, as you can see, is much shorter than lists that you've seen in the past. The area, what I did do is I did remove, Commissioner Gold was appointed to All Care, so that was a change in the past year, so I added that to show she's, she would be All Care for 2020. And then, of course, the change from the original liaison list from last year, Commissioner Pash was on the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, and mid-year, we switched that to Commissioner Gold, so this reflects that she would also serve this coming year on the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. I do have something highlighted in yellow. It's called the Charter Cable Franchise, only because my question was, was that a committee that required the board to appoint someone to it, or was that just something that Commissioner Gold, you follow along with? I'm not sure. So that was one where I thought...
Charter's no longer in existence.
Yeah.
Okay, so that one, I think we should just completely just take off the board altogether. Other than that, I think, I think, and I could be wrong on this because I haven't been part of last year's appointments, but I believe that the ones shown on here are all ones that require formal action to appoint someone to their committees or boards.
What, can, you say charter is no longer in existence?
It's spectrum.
Okay, but it's just a different name?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Commissioner Boyce?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to talk first about boards. I would encourage you to consider being on the Southwest Area Commission on Transportation. I'm a little reluctant to give that up because that is a inside track to all the ODOT projects. And as we watch with anticipation what's going on, Husknotan and other slides, milepost, Port Orford is, is it 338, I think, or 328? That is very nervous. You know, we have a lot of employees come from Port Orford every, every day for, during business days. So that Southwest Area Commission on Transportation, Gary Milliman is the chair. He does an excellent job. I don't know if he'll remain the chair. He's retired, as you know. My alternate on that is Roadmaster Christensen. Of course, needless to say, very capable. I just really want good Curry representation on that. I can remain on that board.
I'll take that.
It's, it's six times a year that you meet, every other month, and there's some really good people you're meeting with Douglas Coos and Curry Counties on that. So I would encourage you to, it's 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock on all Fridays, so that makes it somewhat convenient. So glad you're willing to do that. And I don't want to get into the Parks discussion, but if that's required, then I will. I'd like to make a motion, but without any other changes that I'm unaware of, that we follow through with and leave it as Director Schmelzer has outlined here.
Let me just say something on the Parks. I know that Commissioner Boyce is involved in a whole lot of travel, and...
Could you clarify that, please?
Going up to Salem and so forth?
Okay.
We hear about it all the time.
Oh, that's, that's a little bit negative, I'm sorry.
No, I wasn't...
Maybe you don't need to hear about it. Maybe it's not of interest to you.
No, no, no. That has, was no, nothing negative?
Well, you should have been there, ma'am. You should have been there that whole time. But I covered for you, and I did a good job at it. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
I was just going to say that I would be willing to accept that liaison position.
If I may?
Commissioner Boyce?
First of all, because a commissioner lives in a certain spot, has no bearing on any responsibilities, we represent the entire county, from the Coos County border to the Delnor County, California border. So I've been to the Elk River Sunshine Bar, Laird Lake, a couple of times. I've been to Lobster Creek Park. I've been to certainly Boyce Cope. The list goes on and on and on. This is the one positive thing I feel like I get to do that isn't stressful in this job, and so I enjoy it a lot, and I think I've been productive. I was blindsided by this yesterday. I don't understand, I don't think department head should be calling out who their liaison is going to be, and I'm still baffled to any rational reason why this would be a request from a department head. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, to be honest, the first I heard about it was yesterday, and I'm, I'm neither for or against it. I think we all need to have good relationships with our departments, and we have to have a good working communication. So I don't know if it might be better to bring Mr. Hopkins in at the next meeting and talk about this, Ms. Schmelzer?
He did offer to be here today, and I, I told him that I didn't think he had to be present, but we could do that. We could delay action on that role.
You know, some we can, evidently, you can see Commissioner Boyce would still like to be involved in Parks, as does Commissioner Gold, so maybe if we could have a meeting with him and we could all talk, they could figure out what's the best avenue to do that.
What is the objective, though? To ask him if it's a personal thing or something, or?
Probably yes.
Okay.
Get, get everything out, and we can find out what's, what's going on and why. Civility, I guess, is the, is the objective.
I guess, before we finalize the list to...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just one thing is, I did mention to Commissioner Boyce that Commissioner Gold had also said that she would be willing to serve on the Southwest Area Commission on Transportation because she does serve on the group with the public transit. So there is a tie there. So if you don't have time or not interested, I think Commissioner Gold would be able, or would be willing to accept that one.
I'm, I'm actually fine with that, only because I deal with ODOT now. I deal with, I'm the liaison for the Road Department, so that all ties together.
That, that's fine.
I've already made friends with some of the guys in ODOT, and I've attended some of those meetings with Christensen.
Okay.
So I think that relationship's already forged, where I could move forward comfortably with that.
Okay.
By the way, they're meeting this Friday.
All right. So we want to, let's, I'll, I'll say this. Let me make a motion to approve the liaison list and the committees and boards requiring appointment list per the changes of Southwest Area Commission and Transportation SWAC to be moved to me. Charter cable franchise will be stricken until we find out under the new ownership if we're still required to be with them. And then, of course, we'll bring, we'll bring our Parks Department in, in for the next meeting, and you can discuss with him at that time if there's going to be a change, and then at that time, the board can make that change.
Okay.
So that's the motion.
I'll second that.
I needed to withdraw my motion, I think, didn't I? Probably? Did? I just officially did.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'll, and Chair, or excuse me, Commissioner Gold seconded that.
Do you have a second? Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next, we have H, review and discuss Fair Board Services Agreement. Counsel Huddle.
Oh, thank you. So we've heard about the Fair Board and the agreement, and the agreement's in your packet. If you look at the last page of the agreement, let me see if I've got a, well, it's just on the last, if you scroll down to the end of the agreement, it basically says this agreement, it's number 15, this agreement is binding on the parties and can only be amended by the concurrence of both parties. This document shall be reviewed annually. There has been a request by the Fair Board. It was delivered to me by their chair, Bob Javanti, who's here, and, and he's available to talk to the board about it. I think the board could, if they wanted to, decide on this today. I only had a discussion item to give the board and the Fair Board options to see whether they wanted to look at more of the agreement than just the proposed amendment. But just before you is a proposed amendment. That's on the next page down, page seven of the packet. And what, if you recall, for county employees, so essentially, under this MOU, we contract with the Fair to use legal for contracting and, and personnel, and HR for personnel, but these employees are Fair employees, but they have agreed to use our personnel regs. And our personnel regs require criminal background checks on all of our employees, and they have asked to be, because they have a lot of volunteers, and I think since they're volunteers, they don't get paid, but they would have to pay for the background check, and so they've asked to be excused from that. I'll let Bob Javanti talk about it if the board wants to hear from him.
Mr. Javanti? I will say, as a liaison for the Fair, too, I was at those meetings, so I was present during that discussion. But if you'd like to just kind of summarize for the board what you'd like to see?
Yeah, summarize, the, the discussion was, is we brought it up, so for the backgrounds fix investigations, and it was determined that if it would create an undue burden to the Fair itself if we had all the volunteers, because you can envision somebody's coming in, and I'm a volunteer to do the superintendent in the photo, when I have to get a background check for not getting paid, see you later, out the door. So it would really be detrimental to everything we get done. So when we asked for the amendment, we did include it to say that the paid employees are not part of this exemption. This is only the volunteers. And the 4-H department, who are the ones that work with children and stuff to do that, they all have their own background checks already to do that. So this would be just, you have a volunteer to come up to, to help clean up the fairgrounds before they get it ready. Well, technically, we'd say, well, you have to sign this paper, which we're asking them to sign the paper for the volunteer stuff still, but now you have to do a background check to come in and help us for two hours to sweep the parking lot. So it's kind of be detrimental to that, sort of the thing.
Wasn't your board's discussion also including anyone that could be alone with a child?
Yes.
Would have to have a background check?
That is correct. So if it's, if we happen to set up a section that would say, we'll have a childcare section or a child entertainment section, that person would have to be covered by this as well. So we would definitely make sure to do that, because we're all one for the best and the safety to do that.
Anyone have anything further for Mr. Javanti?
I can certainly understand where you're coming from, and I, and for making sure that the children are safe. So as long as you're making that exemption and making sure that those folks that are working with children are getting that background check, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I think that was spelled out.
It, it's sort of, I don't know if it's exactly spelled out, but what it does say is the requirement that the Curry County Fair Board is relieved from requiring and obtaining mandatory criminal background checks. So in other words, it's, and for Fair facility volunteers, it doesn't talk about unless they're with children or something, but it sounds like you all will create on a case-by-case basis or some kind of guidelines for when you will or won't require it, but you just don't want to do it for everyone.
That is correct.
Okay.
So would you be willing to, if we approved this, to amend this, this document to say, to put that language in there?
Yeah, with the assistance of kind of counsel, we can have that language correctly written, so we're all good.
So what we would do is then bring back the actual, probably the, the whole agreement with the revision or, or the actual revision and, and run it by both boards again before bringing it for final adoption?
Yeah, and that's what it would be, say, we'd have to take it to, but it's not my decision to make, but yeah, I would see it would be amenable to bring that in, and it makes sense.
I just think it's important that we clarify that in the language of the contract so that there's no ambiguity.
Yeah, and that's sort of, it's just to make sure everything gets, and we're not looking at, you know, trying to sidestep anything, but you can see in this day and age where everybody's worried about stuff, says, well, I'm helping you for three hours on Wednesday. Ah, I don't think I need to spend whatever it is to do the background check.
I absolutely understand that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we're gonna...
Well, you'll direct staff, legal counsel to work with the Fair Board to draft an amendment that includes the comments and discussion today.
So noted. All right, moving on to commissioner updates. Commissioner Boyce?
Start the clock, my friend. Go back to Mr. Barnes's request. I think that was pretty timely. Whoops. I have no idea what just happened there. Here we go. So I'll just go, I'll skip the funding that I've been working on for all three years. Maybe another time would be more appropriate. Let's start with the meetings. Do I go to meetings just so I can feel good about going to meetings? My gosh. Curry wildfire prevention, I'll make this pretty brief, Mr. Chair. That's 25 meetings in three years. I've stated over and over, I think the biggest risk that Curry County has is catastrophic mega-fire, and the fuel we have here is just, I don't need to repeat it. AOC counties, I've worked with that board on payment in lieu of taxes. You know, I could just refer to one thing real quick here. In, whoops, worked with Greg Walden, AOC, AOC-C, certainly the two senators. 1.7 million, we got 2018, 2019, 1.6. In contrast, my first year here, we got $263,000. There's, there's a, there's a good list here to justify the time that this county sends me out to travel. AOC, AOC, the Legislative Committee, we just had that discussion, and I'll gladly give that up if somebody changes their mind. I think that's something all commissioners should really be involved with. Southern Oak Task Force, I've also stated publicly, this is the one thing that keeps me up at night. 15 meetings. I'm probably going to miss the fishing meeting in, on the 21st because I have an all-day meeting in Bannon on this very important issue and the fuel that, just that, that entire program. Southern Oregon Workers Investment Board, I have reported to the, to the commission board here on occasion. I'm just really glad to be able to participate. There's some really good, there's one former commissioner on here and some other really good people, and they're making progress. Forest Collaborative, that's part of the reason I went back to Washington DC. More on that later. 11 meetings there. Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, I hate to miss those meetings. There's some really, I mean, that's, we're represented by the District Attorney's Office. Certainly, law enforcement, state police, sheriff's department, city officers, parole and probation. Tomorrow's a meeting on that, and I'll be there, because we have a, we have a pretty good, well-knowned speaker. What do I need to say about the Governor's Fire Response Council? Eight meetings, some, a couple of times I was able to call in. I'm very appreciative of the work that was gained by that, and seeing the state, the local, the federal people come together and, and understand the risk in Oregon, it just goes without saying. It is just a tremendous positive impact, and there also are some incredible people here, very diverse. The Rogesiski Regional Fire and Emergency Training Center, I practically ran to Director Schmelzer's office last night, said, hey, I just heard from Senator Merkley's office. The senator's going directly to the governor in the next week or so, and I sent him a bunch of information in his office to ask for the $800,000 from the state, plus we'll get his support down the road, and he's also working with Wyden's office. The $800,000 we need to buy the 857 acres for this training center. So that is just a huge positive for us.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the Curry County Weed Advisory Board, I wish I had more time to spend on that. When you talk about gorse moving into North County, you talk about Himalaya Blackberries, Pompous Grass, Scotch Broom, my gosh. I have to be there. Somebody has to be there to represent this county and see how we can combat this. I had a meeting with Rich Fairbanks in Bannon, what, two weeks ago, on the gorse and, and the efforts they're making there to overcome that, and how it affects the North County. Certainly, you've seen it in Brookings. More on that later. Where am I? We already talked about the Southwest Area Commission on Transportation, what that means for our county, that the federal highway, the state highway responsibilities, travel Southern Oregon Coast Board member. That's a fun one, and I've been in tourism all my life, so I think, I hope I'm able to contribute something there, and I believe I do likewise. I'm very impressed with the level of expertise on that board. I had the pleasure of taking the Director of Oregon Tourism down, floated down the river 20 years ago, and it's just been, it's just been a good thing, and, and they're also, they have a lot of funds, too, and I'm thankful for that. The Oregon Coastal, I didn't want to get on this commission, but I, my friend David Yamamoto from Tillamook County, he says, Court, you got to be on this. And so we're looking at the well issues, we're looking at the fishing, commercial fishing and issues, we're looking at offshore wind, we're looking at just matching up with the seven Oregon coastal counties. Some good progress there. seven Oregon coastal counties, some good progress there, I can give more detail down the road if the board and the public would like. The District Four Chair, they were here in September, being with the other commissioners, what can I say? All of them are very helpful to Curry County, and we're finally starting to be in a position where we're able to help them and new commissioners on occasion. The Oregon Coast Energy Alliance Network and the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, this is for offshore wind, I'm watching very close, I do not support offshore wind yet, I may not at all, but it is a tremendous amount of, they refer to it as renewable marine energy, and so if the county's not deeply involved in this, then we may get, could get steamrolled and have no say. So through these two, this is a federal agency and, excuse me, the Bureau of Ocean Emergency Management, and the Ocean Coast Energy Alliance is basically Coos and Curry Counties, and some very good people that essentially moved from the offshore wind energy forum we had at SWAC on December 7th. This is a personal board here, the foundation, and I'm very thankful to be able to participate. The citizens are encouraged to call me anytime. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, and then the Suicide Council, I'm very interested to serve on that, should, at the pleasure of the board, thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
Well, I attended an All Care meeting last week, I was very impressed with the group that was there, this is the, it's an advisory committee, and that committee is the committee that determines which entities get grants, and the people that come there have to present their information, and the committee is composed of at least 51% of the people that are served by All Care, which I thought was rather interesting, it's not just high mucky mucks making, determining what goes on, and so they had some very insightful comments, and I was very impressed with what was going on there. I also attended a CTR meeting this morning, and right now they're focusing on RV parks to do recycling, and at this point, there's a lot of educating going on, because people in RV parks are just used to just dumping their garbage anywhere, not anywhere, but in the bins, rather than both places, the recycling and so forth. And also, they're interested in getting a link to our website, to go to the CTR website, and on that website you can get their app, which is good. And also, we talked a little bit about, there was the person from DEQ that was talking about saving food and ways to store food, so that, not just saving food, but you know, there's so much waste in food, and so that people could store their food in the best way possible, so there's not so much waste. And I asked them if they could put that on their website also, that's the CTR website, so people can get that information. So that's pretty much it, thank you.
Well, I'd like to say Happy New Year to everyone out there, and just, hopefully we can have a positive and attitude this year and get a lot of work done. We've got another year with this board in place, and I am excited to work with everyone. Ms. Schmelzer is, continues to impress with all the hats that she wears. As many of you in the county may or may not know, we have had some issues with Curry Community Health, and I will not get into too much of it because of ongoing litigation, but there are some issues that we are facing, and I want the county to be aware of that, and we will promise you one thing, the citizens of the county will not go without the health services, we've been in constant contact with the Public Health Division and the forces that be to help make sure that healthcare gets taken care of in our county, and Ms. Schmelzer's been leading that, and I applaud you for taking on the challenges that you're taking on with that, and the many hats that you're wearing. My trip to Washington for the National Legislative Council for NACO will happen the end of February. We have made a stride that I think will benefit the citizens of Curry County. David Barnhart, who is the Secretary of the Interior, has agreed to meet with me and talk about Curry County and the Rogue River, the Chetco River, and all the rivers in the county, and the enorm amount of rock and gravel that is in the sediment, the fishing that's here, I've spoken with his office several times about this, and he's an avid outdoorsman, and we've invited him to come to the county and do some fishing and water, whitewater things, you know, events here in the county, he's also an avid hunter, maybe our sheriff would like to take him out shooting one day or something, but it'd be fun to have the Secretary of the Interior in Curry County, I'm not saying that he'll come, but I am certainly going to shake his hand in the beginning of March and invite him to do that, and hopefully we can get some issues that are pressing Curry County and the rivers, some of the fish issues that we have, some of the issues with the Army Corps of Engineers, that we can get them out on the table and start to develop that relationship and get some of this repaired, and get the rock out of our rivers. So that's basically all I have. Again, I'd like to thank staff for this last year, we've gone through so many changes, we've got Summer Madison back, Miss Wisconsin.
Did you call her?
Well, Madison, Wisconsin.
Oh, I got it, okay.
That's how you say the name, because I always mess it up and call her meths, but we've got some of our staff members back, and it's good to see our sheriff's department budgeted properly and have the opportunity to offer your deputies what they need, and offer the citizens of this county the security and safety that they need. So again, I'd like to thank everyone for this past year, and I look forward to the year coming. And with that, we are going to adjourn this meeting and enter into executive session per ORS 1926602D, 1926602F, 196602A.
And could we add H, litigation?
And 1926602H, litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And we will come back in after we are through executive session, so with that, this meeting is in recess.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs, and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently, and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique, because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing, there's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer, and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical, because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally, and I'm pleasantly surprised, it's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas, outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away, and so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors, so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford, we did nine UPEC farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people, it's very small, so we have to bring in tourists, and being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life, and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive, we're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know anybody else's, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan, and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area, so we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station, so now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days, because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small, and now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here, we've had a bang up last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area's been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively, then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it, and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard, it's gonna take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day, or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun, to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is, and what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is, and that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community, with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river, beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside, and standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque, small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon, you're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually, much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline, they're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered, but while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The Central Coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fowlweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront feel, with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays, and don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters, they were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yahaats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yahaats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hasida Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes, but you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific Coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one, but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall, you're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The wild coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home, small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There is little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum, you've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria, ride a horse along the waves near Florence, pet a baby tiger near Bandon, hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different, the ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the big, major issues affecting Oregon, and for that matter, all western states. A real actionable response that's including, how do we fight fire, actively managing our forests so that we don't have the fuels out there, and how are we gonna protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we, as a board, have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says, "Once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression," and recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties, essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire, prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County, and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity, and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me, because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources, and as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So my name is Merv George Jr., and I'm the forest supervisor for the Rogue River Siski National Forest. The first thing is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm gonna focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the fire chief of Jackson County Fire District 3 in southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, incredibly concerning to us and the fire community, those and our communities in general, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned as they ought to be. Really, the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. It's really an inspiring showing of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our land so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue, it's bearing down on us, fire season is approaching, and I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires specifically from being burnt down. That's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. We're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand if all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart, because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water, because I have told them that we're all born in water, we cannot live without it. It's our job to take care of it, stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans, because there's life in that water, and it's our job to keep it clean for them. Because we cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio, at the Ohio River, with Dr. Imoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could heal. He and I stood on the riverbank blessing the Ohio River that they had us come to do, and I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too, remember your prayers, because they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
There's something about having land and sea, never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you: to the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry, and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the west coast's best coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County, and don't leave anything out.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports...
The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before and after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new design rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we're actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the Sound of Safety.
Well, we're here with Commissioner Colleen Roberts for the monthly meeting of the ONC Board, which Colleen sits on. Colleen, why don't you tell our audience a little bit about your mission and what you guys discuss at these monthly meetings?
Sure. Our ONC Board is of the 18 counties in Oregon that are part of the ONC lands on their BLM, federal lands. And we discuss everything about these lands. The ONC Act of 1937 is our primary focus, how the decisions that these lands get managed, do they match up with the congressional mandate of the ONC Act, and how we can better educate and help administer the care of these lands for the health and safety and welfare of the citizens that we represent.
I would imagine you discuss things like how many board feet can be taken out of the forest in different areas, are these things that come up each month?
Yes, well, harvest timber management is a big part of our conversation, as is lately the fire issues.
We're here today with Commissioner Dan DeYoung of Josephine County. Dan, you have an important role on the ONC Lands Board, and we're here in beautiful Gold Beach, Oregon, discussing the monthly matters of ONC. What was your main focus at this meeting?
Today, we had a really good sit-down with two representatives of the BLM, and there's constantly, we work with BLM because actually the ONC lands are on BLM lands, and that's our concern. Mainly, the ONC Board of Directors, which is a membership from all 18 counties. We always meet, I think it's bi-monthly, and then we have an annual meeting, and it's basically to discuss what the sign says, Forest Health Jobs and County Services, that the money coming from the sale of timber on ONC lands goes through the federal government. They take their share out of it and then return it back to the counties to be used for basically jobs, county services, a lot of county services such as law enforcement, schools. There's just an awful lot of things that these individual counties can use the money for, but it's from the sale of timber on the ONC lands. ONC lands goes way back to 1937 with the 1937 ONC Congressional Act and the ONC Act of 1937. We're just trying to get back to the actual verbiage and the language that's in that act. It's surprising to us how we can ignore a congressional act. That remains to be answered by the federal government, but that's what we want to get back to.
Hi there. I'm Tillamook County Commissioner Dave Yamamoto. I'm a member of the ONC Board and also the Chair of the Council of Forest Trust Land Counties. And in Tillamook County, it's very important that we consider natural resource-based economies. So in Tillamook County, we have lots of dairy. I'm sure you're familiar with Tillamook Creamery, but also lots of state and federal timber lands. When it comes to federal timber lands in particular, everyone thinks that we're looking at timber revenue, and that's very important. But one side of the coin that people don't consider are the family wage jobs that come with old timber. It's not just the timber receipts that we get. These are family wage jobs. These are fully benefited jobs, whereas on the tourism side, the income is about a third of what we would consider a family wage job, and there are also no benefits with those. So timber receipts are very important, but it's the family wage jobs that they create at the same time, which are very important to counties like Tillamook.
Perfect. Keeping it real for families in Tillamook County.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yamamoto.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are here with County Commissioner Bob Main from Coos County, Oregon, and we've had the monthly meeting of ONC lands here. And Mr. Main, Commissioner Main, I should say, tell us what your role is, Bob, on the ONC Lands Board.
I am the Vice President of the ONC Association of ONC Counties. It consists of 18 ONC counties, western Oregon counties. And we make sure that the counties receive their payments from those ONC lands that Congress designated for the sole purpose of those 18 ONC counties. For no other reason, Congress decided that when they took back the lands and took them off the tax roll, that the counties should benefit from the harvest of those lands. Without that, the tax rates, like in my county, would be two to three times higher.
Oh, okay. So you help keep the tax rates down in your county by utilizing the full function of this congressional act?
Absolutely.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are here with Oregon Curry County Commissioner Court Boyce. Thank you so much for taking a moment to speak with us.
Well, thank you. With the natural resource base that this state has, I've spent, or spending better than half of my time as a county commissioner on those issues, fire management, public lands management, certainly natural resources, all of those. And so I'm often reminded that 250 years ago, the generations that came before us when they got here to Oregon, include Northern California, they found the greatest forest in all of North America, that produced the greatest watersheds, that produced the most pristine rivers, that give us the highest quality of salmonella that runs arguably on the planet.
How many letters?
Five letters.
Just think about it. What am I doing right now? Smile. Smile? Uh-huh. This is so easy.
Sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first test at this posted speed limit of 30 miles per hour.
Bob Weeks and Harley Bills are seeing more than their share of curvy roads these days. Their job is to drive every stretch of highway in Region 1 several times.
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style, and so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leeming, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car, and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by five to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time. They're getting out there right now.
Now we're going to W-113.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs. If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, healthcare, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the US and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping commonsense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the US-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government, and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work. Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American, every
Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter. Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are, you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country, with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities. And the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways, keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Yeah, I just picked her up. We should be there in 20 minutes.
Who is it? Oh, it's him. Where is he?
I know. Yeah, I know.
When a large forest fire breaks out, potentially threatening lives, homes, wildlife, and thousands of acres of forest land, the news coverage is immediate and consistent. Interviews with homeowners, firefighters, medical aid providers, and others continues nonstop until the fire is sufficiently contained. At that point, the cameras are turned off, the interviews are over, and it's on to the next event. The images of catastrophic wildfire with its ferocity and devastating impact on the land hold the interest and attention of the public. However, there is an equally important story occurring on that same landscape after the fire is contained, mopped up, and finally declared out that the public seldom sees. The frequency and size of these megafires on federal forest land has increased significantly over the last few decades. All too often, what is left in their wake is a vast sea of dead, charred trees. Unfortunately, because of a maze of confusing and often contradictory rules and regulations, very little rehabilitation or reforestation occurs after these fires. The result of this neglect, in many cases, is as devastating as the fire itself. Here's why. Even in the hottest, severe fires, most of the dead trees remain standing, the wood not damaged by the fire, still suitable and valuable for lumber. But as the insects move in, within months, the dead and dying trees begin to deteriorate and decompose. Eventually, all of the economic value is lost. What is not removed will decay, add fuel to an even greater future fire threat, and in the process, release the greenhouse gases that the trees gathered and stored during the centuries they were alive. When all of the trees across the tens of thousands of acres burned in each of these megafires are left to rot, millions of tons of destructive greenhouse gases are released into the upper atmosphere. These are the same volatile organic compounds that have been identified as some of the most damaging elements we can put into our air. In contrast, trees harvested soon after the fire is out drive the economic engine that employs people, provides revenue for the critical restoration and reforestation, and can provide dollars for local government services such as schools, public safety, health and social services, libraries, and good roads. When the harvested trees are made into lumber for homes, construction, and furniture, the carbon remains in storage instead of going up into the atmosphere. Dead and dying timber becomes a magnet for insect infestation. These infestations can be so large that they do not end with the burned forest, but progress into the surrounding green forest, killing even more trees, which then become even more fodder for the next fire. In absence of prompt active management and reforestation, invasive brush can dominate the landscape. That brush can retard and even prohibit the growth of the new forest and compound the fuel load for a future fire. When that fire does occur, the dense brush and dead fallen trees on the ground create a firestorm, burning hotter and even more damaging to the soil than the first fire. These damaged soils can repel water, lack the nutrients and organic matter needed by seedlings, and hinder the ability of new trees to grow. While megafires can be so devastating, not all fires are bad. When the conditions are right, fire has been used for decades as an effective way to reduce fuels on the forest floor, burn back brush and dead grass to stimulate the new growth desired by wildlife, thinning out the younger, overstocked areas of our forests, and maintain the fire resiliency we seek. Controlled burning can be a powerful and useful tool, used in the right places, at the right time, by the professionals we charge with managing these forests. The desired result is to lessen the potential for the large, devastating megafires we have been experiencing these past few decades. Recovery after megafires is not only possible but can greatly expedite the restoration and creation of all of the benefits of a healthy forest ecosystem. One fine example is Oregon's Tillamook State Forest. After repeated massive fires in the mid-20th century, state, county government, private companies, and even schoolchildren worked together to restore and replant over 500 square miles of burned-over landscape. As a result of those efforts, today we have prime fish and wildlife habitat for salmon, trout, elk, and owls, plus camping, hiking, and biking trails, healthy growing forests that gather and store carbon, and sustainable timber harvest that supports local economies, funds schools and local governments, and supports thousands of family wage jobs across the region. Without the vision of those state and local leaders just a few decades ago, very little, if any, of this would be possible today. Nearly every year for the past 20 years, we have watched millions of acres of our public forests burned by megafires. We spent hundreds of millions, even billions of dollars fighting them. Yet when the fire is out, a mere fraction of the killed trees and lost value is ever recovered with little or no effort to restore the burned landscape. What can you do? Contact your elected federal, state, and local officials. Tell them these federal lands and once treasured forests are too valuable to simply walk away. Future generations are depending upon you to take action. For more information, visit us on Facebook at Communities for Healthy Forests.
If yours is the next big idea and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the National Forest down to the protected ocean. And it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was though until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded. We're unspoiled. And we're a little difficult to get to, but my god, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves. And I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms. And it just gained traction and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people. It's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know who anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help. So we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides. And we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang the last two years. And it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have. And it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way. And it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard. It's gonna take a long time. So roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day, or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific coast scenic byway.
All right, we are back in session. It is 2:11 on January 8, 2020. After leaving executive session, we are to proceed. Staff is to proceed as directed from executive session. This meeting is adjourned.
You said 2:11. You said 2:00. You meant 12.